Policy Subcommittee. I read through the first line. Do you want to read through for 3320 expenditures and purchase procedures?
Yes, so currently what was in the board packet is the existing policy. And I know there was a request to discuss this policy further and make some changes, but I didn't have any of those requested changes in writing. So I thought maybe we could have a discussion, take a look at the existing policy and play with language, add language, take some, any suggestions, input or feedback, as well as pick RJ's brain a little bit and then see if we can draft one up for review at a subsequent meeting.
Erica, can I make a request?
Yes.
Can we do the 6000s tier each first so I can jump back into that other meeting?
Erica, is that okay?
What is that?
No, that's fine.
That was Erica to the second.
Got it.
Erica squared.
Go ahead.
So 6159 is Individualized Education Program, Special Education Program. This, this policy is in existence under instruction and it was revised in August of 2019. However, new updates and new legislations do require another revision. And Bob was working on a revision on that potential policy. Bob, if I give you screen sharing capabilities, would you like to pull up the draft that you'd like to sort of discuss?
I do not have a copy of that handy.
Okay.
I do not have a copy of that. So I revised it on the spreadsheet and then deleted that copy.
I can post what?
I revised it.
Put in the packet.
Deleted that copy, sorry.
I put it in the packet so I can.
Okay, so the one in the, the one I see in the packet says it was revised in August 13th of 2019.
Correct. And then CAVE recently issued, reissued another series of recommendations. It made it longer. So we took, we took a hard look at that in my department. And then we even ran it by council. And in the less is more world, we decided to revise that policy to two or three paragraphs. And the reason for that is, is that the policy as written and suggested by CAVE is basically a reiteration of the law. And anytime you reiterate the law or language of the law, you run a greater risk of the law changing and your policy not changing, which increases your liability, which actually increases your liability. We simply edited it from, I think it was eight or nine pages, down to two or three paragraphs, which essentially states East Haven Public Schools follows state and federal regulations relative to the services provided for special education students. That's it in a nutshell.
So this one right here, Bob, is that, that is on the screen that Melissa pulled up, is your revised version of 6159?
That's correct. That looks like, yes. I don't have my glasses on, but.
I believe that actually was.
Yeah, this is the revised one. I just, I didn't put anything on the bottom. I figured we would wait till after.
Thank you, Melissa. That was very helpful. I appreciate that. So that's the revised version of 6159. And you probably have seen an old version of this because I, my memory is that it's six to eight pages. And the CAVE amendments to it would have made it probably six to nine pages. But in, in, in discussion, that's, that's found not to be helpful.
Did you not include a copy of the, the law? I don't, I don't.
The law is the law.
In the board packet, 6159 was the condensed version of the original policy.
Right, but he said, you know, you run a risk of not being updated. But if the law's not there for people, but you, it's listed somewhere when you, when you have your meetings and whatnot, right?
Well, the regulations are what the regulations are. So if anyone was interested in the regulation, they should refer to the regulation.
Okay. And this, this policy seems to indicate that if the regulations change, the policy automatically changes with them if it says we follow it.
That's what the new policy said.
I get it, go ahead.
Yes, that's what the new policy says. But yeah, we, we were trying to keep up with the regulations, which inadvertently increases our liability. So in the less, in the less is more world department, this is probably a better policy for the board to accept.
And it's okay to obviously do it this way because, you know.
Yes, yes, because it's my job to keep you out of trouble, Tricia.
Right.
At least in the special education world.
Yes.
I can't keep you out of trouble in other things, but I can at least keep you out of trouble.
Take all the help we can get.
Appreciate it. And then any other questions on 6159?
No, just thank you for all that, the work. And I agree with the less is more. That's, that was a good job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so if we move on to 6172.4 Title One Parent-Family and Engagement Policy?
And please excuse me.
Yes, thank you, Bob. Appreciate you joining in.
Thank you, Erica.
Yep, so the, the Title One Parent and Family Engagement Policy, 6172.4. This policy requires some specialized meetings in advance of the board adopting, revising, or creating a new policy. And so Julie has been working through parent engagement to meet some of those recommendations relative to this policy. So we wanted you to have a look at the existing policy, but we also invited Julie here because I want her to explain what's sort of going on behind the scenes relative to this policy that's mandated prior to the board adopting it. So Julie, thank you for being here this evening.
Absolutely. This, this policy is a direct result of ESSA. So Every Student Succeed Act is what requires the board to have this policy. And some changes were made, particularly with language between family involvement and changing that to family engagement. And when the policy spoke of parents, it's now parents and family members. And it's an inclusive policy. And the ESSA requirement is that we participate and engage families in the creation of this policy and the approval of it before it gets presented to the board. And so that's the, the stage we're at right now. We've researched sample policies from neighboring towns and some still have the old policy and others have the new aligned policy. So we're using some of that language, presenting it to at least one representative from each school. So my hope is at least I will be able to share it with the, the PTO board in each building before you actually have a vote on accepting it. So that is where we are at. And there was one more thing I wanted to let you know about it. Oh, the other requirement for this policy, and we're going to put an asterisk at the bottom, is that it, that it's required to be updated yearly. So it would have to fall out of the, the revision cycle. And just remember, at the start of each year, we'll, we'll just revisit and share that information with families before it comes up for approval.
So that could be maybe Julie, a review every year instead of a revision? And then we can.
Right.
Creating the review date. And this is because we generally include this policy in our parent handbook as well.
Correct.
Yeah. So once Julie, you know, coordinates the, the work with the PTOs and the schools and we get the adequate parent input and involvement in the construction of that policy, we will bring a policy back that is revised based on that input and feedback. We wanted to bring it to your attention, let you know that it, it will be forthcoming and that we're working on it.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Julie. Any feedback on this policy or questions? Perfect. Then we can go back to 3320 Expenditures and Purchase Procedures.
Yes, so we included the original policy in the board packet this evening. There was a request to revise it. So we're, we're seeking input and feedback on revision language and/or edits that the board would like to make so we can bring a revised version back. RJ, did you want to add anything relative to this?
Relative to our goal or relative to my thoughts?
Relative to your thoughts on the existing bidding policy, number 3320.
So my, my recommendation would be to get on the same page as the town. The bidding procedure now for the town has a threshold of $7,400. Where our policy now is $7,000. I think it would be beneficial if we're all on the same page to clear up any confusion there may be on where projects like. I believe their policy is 3,400 to, with the top threshold being 7,400. Anything over 7,400 goes out to bid. Where on our end is 3,000 to 6,999, going out to bid at 7,000 and above. And I, I think it'd be beneficial for us to all be on the same page since we are in fact a part of the town. We fall under their charter. And all the other language I think we can work on, but that would be my one larger recommendation.
So in the policy where it says purchases requiring competitive bidding process, 7,000 or more, that would say it reads $7,400 or more.
Correct. I have a copy of the towns in front of me and it says that the charter provides all purchases over a certain amount be placed out to bid. The bid amount is for all tangible goods and is $7,400 for fiscal year 7/120 to 6/30/2021. And this was rewritten by them June 19th of 2020.
I think that's a good idea. I think just having everything aligned across the board townwide. I don't think that's a bad idea at all.
I agree. I, I, I think it would be a big help.
Yes, no questions asked and everybody knows the same number.
It doesn't affect our autonomy, right? I mean, you know, if we start getting, you know, I'm just saying the board acts as an independent body from, from the town, you know? I just want to make sure we're not giving up anything.
Um, Jack, I just to point on, like picking back on some of that. Tom, you may recall, you've been on as long as I have. I think that there was a reason why there was, there was a diff, like difference. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, why they were, there was the fourth, you know, the $400 difference, like 74 versus seven. Do you remember, Tom?
I was there too, Lisa. I'm trying to think.
There's no reason, there's no reason. We should do the 7,400. It makes sense.
Absolutely. I just didn't, I recall there being some reason, but if you don't recall, that's fine.
No reason.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Is there? So then there's another dollar amount in here. The 3,006,999 for three quotations. Does that need to be realigned?
Did RJ get kicked off?
No.
Oh, no, he's there. Um, Tom's hand is up, so I think that's why.
Go ahead, Tom.
What's that? Am I good?
Your hand's up, go ahead.
All right, so I got a couple of things. One is in the. What is it? Oh, the competitive quotation process. We should tighten that thing up so that there's dates involved in it. I've had a couple of people mention to me that they think they price things for the Board of Education and their price gets shown to other people. So I think we should make it date sensitive and more. What do I want to say? It's, it shouldn't be an open process. It should be a closed process.
Right. Tom?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that. I just wanted, somebody had asked a question way back in the beginning. Do you want to look at this like front to bottom? Or well, somebody asked about the purchases of goods, general services, about the three quotations between 3,000 and 6,999. Did you see that?
Yeah, I see that.
Did RJ wanted to make a change to that?
Is that?
That's fine. Yeah, I thought we were going to line up with the town.
Yeah, so I, I, I think if we're gonna, that lower threshold, I think we could open up for discussion if you want. I think that 7,000 should be 7,400 to line up with the town. But if we're going to move that up seven to 74, it puts up for debate if you want to move that lower threshold up to 34 as well.
To 74? Cause it's, oh, oh.
The 34 and the, make both numbers meet the same threshold, straight.
Yeah, so anything under that 34, like, you know, anything under $3,400, we would require three competitive quotes, not going out to bid, but require the three competitive quotes.
How come I remember that it being 4,000? Does anybody else?
Me, I, I remember that.
I remember it, yeah. What's the town for competitive quotes?
There's nothing here for competitive quotes. I can reach out to Jim to get clarification though, tomorrow.
It was really, I, I, there was a reason we, we, we were finding ourselves like, like getting quotes or something. Remember, Tom? I, I know we went to 4,000. There was too, too many, too much of something going on there.
Right.
That was like not necessary, right?
I, I would agree going to 4,000 for competitive quotes would be beneficial. I mean, that dollar threshold is kind of like, it's a popular dollar amount for some repairs that we need to get done and some things that happen. So like if we're going to be around that threshold, we see that a lot where to get something fixed, we're going out to get three quotes before we're getting it fixed.
And you're okay with 4,000?
Yep. Again, I'll, I'll reach out to the town to make sure we're all good on both ends before we finalize anything, but yes.
Would that up the 6, 6,999 too then?
No, if we go up to, if, if we're going to say at least 4,000 but less than 74.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You would go to the, to the 3, 3,99.
Okay, sorry, that was just.
RJ, Lee said, do me a favor if you don't mind, just check on that. Cause I mean, we're being very, very obvious here, clear, saying that, you know, if it's, if it's seven, you know, their way and seven four our way, if it was the same and there was no issue, it would be like across the board, like why not kind of thing? So I do recall there being something. So can you look into that, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
So Tom, we can go back to whatever you want now. I'm so sorry to do that.
So getting back to what I said, the competitive pricing. People feel like their price is being shown to other vendors. So we, we gotta tighten that procedure up so that that can't happen. Open them up all at the same time, have a date, throw them in a lockbox? I don't know, but that should be tightened up.
We handle that way right now.
Yeah.
When something goes out to bid, they're opened at a specified time. They're sealed when they get here, they're stamped when they get here. Nobody sees anything until they're open.
Right.
The quotes are just required by whoever's requesting the funds to provide us with those three quotes.
So we gotta, we gotta tighten that up.
We can possibly. Yeah, I understand.
The other thing I was gonna.
I'm sorry, can I get clarification on that? Because, you know, I want to make sure that I'm coming back with revised language that is in response to what you're saying, Tom?
Yeah.
I don't think that, I'm sorry, I don't think that's going to be a policy thing. I think that's just like a, an actual handling of the bids, correct, Tom? I don't think that's like. Yeah, I think, I think that's a way that they physically need to be handled. I, I think that's some, something that they feel that, feel as though, I feel like that's like an information leak, so, so to speak. Because I mean, but except. Right in the policy, that's something that they feel that we're not handling our bids properly. I mean, it's just something that they need to trust that once we get our, our bids, that they are being handled and they're, they're being handled in a proper way.
Can I say something about that? I think that it's a mistake and especially in any kind of financial track, transaction, you just trust. I'm, there, I'm sure it's going to come up sometime, maybe in 10 years, when somebody is involved in a purchase who knows somebody who's bidding on it, who's privileged to the, what the bids have come in as. Will, and will leak it out to help their friend. I think it actually has to be stated, there is no leaking, that this is, this is, it's all confidential. The confidentiality has to be put into the, into the, the.
Policy.
Because as, we all know how people have said, oh, but we've done it in East Haven this way for a long time.
That's very.
We've got to stop doing things like that in East Haven.
Very fair to say.
And so this confidentiality piece, is this going in the competitive bidding process? Or is it going in the?
I would say.
I heard competitive, but I also heard it being placed in the.
Quotes.
The quotes, yeah. I just want to make sure.
Quote is the problem.
I'm sorry?
The quote is the problem, area.
2B, Erica, I think.
Yeah.
Can it be in both?
A or B?
Well, I think our requirement of 2A is going to remain the same beyond the dollar threshold. I think what we're going to try to get some language in there for would be 2B, where we're going to try to put some controls in place to prevent the leaking of information.
Are we going to be changing that amount to 3,400 and less than 74?
Correct. The, the amounts are going to change, but anything within that dollar threshold that needs competitive quotes, we still want to tidy up the process.
I think Tom is also saying though, not just in the competitive process, but in the quotation process as well. So two, so the B, bid specifications, I think that has to do with competitive bidding. That's why I was asking. So he wants, you know, he's referring that that has to be, you know, obviously the confidentiality and not sharing information through the competitive process. But I think he also wants to see it as part of the quotation process for anything between 4,000 and 7,400.
Yes, but Erica, may, this is Tia, can I say something? B, right there says, the quotation process does not require public opening. So there's a lot that has to be changed in B, yes? I think, Tom, is that what you're referring to?
I'm, I'm not saying we have to do a public opening. I'm just saying we have to change our policy so that we have better security on competitive quotations. That's all I'm saying.
So then next, more or less be specific to competitive bidding.
Competitive quotations, not bidding. Their price is being shown to other competitive quoters.
Yep, I get it.
So this is outside of the sealed bid process.
Right.
So what you just put, solicited by the superintendent of schools in a confidential manner?
You could do that. You could do that. I don't know. I'd like to see some dates in there so everyone knows when to put it in.
That's good.
What do you, what do you mean, Tom? Explain further.
Well, we'll accept competitive, competitive pricing for this project and prices have to be in by March 9th at 5:00 PM. Now, if person's worried about security, they just bring it in at 4:59 and they hand it to you. Now they know, no one can see their price.
So that happens for the bidding over the threshold right now.
Right.
For the three quotes that happen, we, and I think we can probably, if we need to change our controls, but. So say somebody approaches us and says, we want to buy something for X amount of dollars. We require three, three quotes to come back. That person goes and gets those three quotes and brings them back to us. So there, there may lie some, we can tidy that up a bit. But I don't know how we can timestamp or document the receiving of those and limit that to a timeframe.
Well, you, you gotta figure it out.
There could be, it, it could be sent to finance directly.
It's a problem.
Maybe it should be, so maybe that would help, I don't know.
Cause usually the person who's like seeking out, like if I wanted to buy three staplers and I had to go get quotes, I'm seeking out prices. I would go to Staples and I would go to Walmart and I would go to another place and I would get those quotes myself. So if we're, if we're going to formalize the quotation process, we're going to have to rework that whole control system.
But that would really help though, instead of having different individuals, like, do you really have to go and get three quotes for staplers? I know you were using that.
I, I was using that, I was.
I know, I know. But isn't there, I, I knew that, I really did know that. But my question was, is there a threshold for that, you know?
4,000, anything over 4,000, right? You have to go get the three quotes.
So, so I think that would help to maybe tighten that up. I don't know, don't we, I don't know. Maybe they have to submit their quotes to, to somebody. Do they do that?
Yeah, so if you request, if you're purchasing something and, you know, you've got to get three, three quotes and three different prices, you would, you know, elicit that because it's not posted formally.
Right.
Like a bid specification would be in the paper for a specific amount of time with a sealed bid opening.
Erica, it's Jack. When you say when you're purchasing something, who are you referring to? I mean, anybody could be making, doing this? A teacher, a custodian? I mean, what are we talking?
Yeah, yeah. So you know, if Jen, Jen Murray is, is going to purchase dry erase easels and her purchases over 4,000, she would generally go to school specialty, Walmart. She would go get three different quote, quote prices to make sure that, you know, what she, what she's purchasing is a fair and equitable deal and marketable for whatever she's purchasing. And so she would submit those three quotes with her PO as evidence that she went out and, you know, she's purchasing these and from this particular vendor who is not totally askew from what whiteboard should cost. Does that make sense?
If you have individuals doing that, can't that get a little, I'm not, you know, saying someone's not going to tell you the truth, but isn't that more apt to, I don't know, I thought everything just like, I, I don't know. Some people work it like you can only buy these kinds of materials from this company because somebody else has already done that kind of legwork. I don't know.
I think Tia, there's a, there's a layer. Yes, so in some instances, yes, like, you know, there's purchasing consortia, like school specialty generally has very, very good prices because.
Right, yeah.
We, they've been sort of vetted. So people will go to them for a price quote in addition to two other vendors.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so my question would be, so, so you're looking for, to get three prices? And then, you know, somebody has, has an advertisement, we'll beat any price. So you'd, you'd have to say, well, this is what I got from, you know, Staples. Can you beat that price? But, but I understand what Tommy's saying. It's not fair, you know, it's not fair when.
Right, you can't do that.
Can't do it. Okay.
That's a tricky situation, I think. I don't know.
We'll wrap our hands around this.
Yeah, you'll figure it out.
I'm pretty sure like, I mean, we almost want to model off our bidding.
Right.
submissions. And somehow, some way, we need to just figure out how to get that done a little bit more timely to not hold up. You know, these items normally are our quick repairs or something that needs to get fixed. You know, we don't, we don't have a few weeks to wait for a full bid procedure. So getting the three quotes is doing our due diligence to maybe make sure we're getting a fair price. So if we change the procedures to maybe make sure we're doing it in a way that doesn't slow up the whole process for us. But we could definitely get something in place.
Sounds good.
Where's Erica?
Erica? I'm here, sorry.
I got, I, I have one more thing.
Go ahead, Tommy.
Purchases exceeding $100,000 must be recommended by the superintendent and approved by the East Haven Board of Education. Purchases exceeding a hundred thousand dollars must be recommended by the superintendent and approved by the East Haven Board of Education. I don't understand that crazy sentence, and I think it's a mistake.
And that's at the bottom of thirty-three twenty.
It's uh thirty-three twenty, yeah, it's in section C, cooperative purchases.
RJ, what's your take on that?
I think any purchase over our threshold should be handled the same way.
Right, so wouldn't that fall into that guideline, that's kind of like a misrepresented sentence?
Correct.
Yeah, because they approve any P O over seven thousand dollars anyway, right? Well, now it will be seventy-four hundred.
Correct, anything over that threshold is going to go out to bid and it's going to come to the board for approval no matter what. So no matter if it's seventy-four hundred, one dollars, or it's a hundred thousand dollars.
So can we just remove that language altogether? I mean, it's kind of.
Yeah, get rid of it.
I agree, I don't call anyone else fielder if they want to interject it, I think it's.
Yeah, i- it's just redundant.
Correct, I agree. Anyone have anything else?
I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Tia.
With that part where it said, is authorized to make, i- isn't that what we do, right? You invite people up from the board if they're available to come and be a part of the bidding process, or when they open up the envelope or whatever, correct?
Correct.
So, all right, now I understand it, thank you, I just needed to ask.
When the, when the bid is advertised, there is an opening ad- advertised as well, and it says the bids will be opened at this time in this location. And now Lynn sends out um a Zoom invitation for all to see, so we can do it virtually.
RJ, do you have anything else that you'd like to see this um represent or?
No, I think it's good, I think just being together with the town is very important, and it will avoid any confusion or any mishaps.
Okay.
Going forward.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll tidy up the control language on our end here, so when we get together next time, we can discuss further.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything? Tom Murtough, do you have anything that you want to add? I think you're still muted.
The other thing I was wondering, because there's a bunch of discussion that, about like whiteboards or staplers, for example. Instead of having one person, you know, going out and getting three quotes, is there a way to have like a, a group of teachers that would, you know, rotate? And if requests were made, they would be the ones to do it and then put the proposals together. This way, nobody can say that one person is constantly going to this place or that place.
I think, Erica, I think, I don't know if you understood, I think what I took from that was um, usually when the expenditures come in, it was, isn't it the principle it won't come from an individual teacher, correct? Like supply list, is that, is that what you mean?
Generally, those, those items that teachers are sort of requesting are under the four thousand dollar threshold. Usually, over four thousand is coming from administration and they are getting the three price quotes. But I also think that having a purchasing person in place can also assist with a lot of uh these processes and procedures and controls. And can vet, as Tia said, you know, um vendors and ensure that the price quotes that are submitted with the P O are truly reflective of the costs of those goods that are over four thousand. Um, so I, you know, there's, there's a lot of room for improvement and uh control work here. And, and Tom, just to sort of to your point, there are certain focus things that are like under curriculum and instructions. So if we were going to, for example, in the Spanish textbooks that we purchased, um, we got three, we are, you know, we are required, or I asked my curriculum leaders to select at least three vendors. In some cases, there may only be a company, like if it's a very specialized automotive textbook, there may not be lots of vendors that would have that, so. Um, but they would, we would get, to Erica's point, a sense of how much these types of things cost. And then there's a protocol for vetting, like, what are you looking for that includes this kind of thing? It's run by technology, so any um thing we're purchasing, we know works with our existing system, so there's multiple checks within those processes. Um, not for like whiteboards, but you know, for things that might interface with other, you know, if we're going to use a platform and an app on a Chromebook, we want to make sure that tech has looked at it. Um, and so those are, those are processes that are internally, I think, in place. And you may have seen them in the recent adoption of some curriculum materials.
Which is, the latest was the foreign language, right?
That's right, that's right.
So you vetted your sources and you.
Yeah, and the documents are in the board packet, there was three different, you know, price points we've shared with you, and then we sort of had some rubrics where they scored the materials, and so it's not always the lowest price. Um, but it is, the, there's some viewing transparency on the value. And what we saw that is matching our criteria for selection. Um, so we try to mirror that in the controls, because we want to make sure that those are the highest quality things we're putting in front of kids.
Makes sense. Thank you, anyone else have anything that they want to add to this?
I do, if I could.
Go ahead, RJ.
So while we're talking about it, I'd like to, if we could, address the waiver section. We have some language in there that states if there's a sole source vendor, that if we can waive the procedures.
Oh, that's kind of, yeah.
So I'd like to get some clarity from everybody, because I know we've had previous discussions on sole source vendors, vendors on the state list, kind of thing, all in this waiver set, like, I'm, I always would err on the side of caution where we should always go out to bid whenever possible. But I know, like, for I T reasons, we do have some issues where it is a sole source, but we're comfortable using somebody for the quality of material. You know, we, we understand that the craftsmanship of what we're getting is very high quality and that means a lot. So I'd like to add some language to this section to clarify that, to avoid any situations if, if we can. If we're against it, let's add it, if we're not, let's carry on.
What would you suggest for language, RJ?
Well, I mean, are we truly comfortable with a sole source vendor? Like, if somebody comes to us and says, you know, I'm looking to do a project and there's one vendor in the state who we're comfortable with, we've used in years past, do we continue on with them, knowing that if we get a bid, we're not comfortable with their product, we're not, you know, it's just going to be an undercut kind of thing? Or do we want, you know, do we take that out and say we bid everything?
I, I think RJ says, I think we need to be very clear, like, it's been stated, we've got ourselves in situations several times, many times. I think that if you're going to state, you know, make that, you need to state it and be very clear, like you just, you just suggested, because it's going to be, you know, an outburst, every time something like this occurs and we go with that, that one company because they're the only bidder, it becomes a problem, I think we should be either consistent, or if we're not consistent across the board, then you need to be very clear in your wording.
Like, right now, like, that section one states, such as purchases of copyright materials and textbooks, are we limited to that? Do we add I T to that? Do we add parameters to that? Do we take out purchases in te- in textbooks? And possibly require whoever's, whoever's requesting the project to document why?
But I think, didn't we just, I think there is a place for it, I believe Jen just talked to that. Like, she's going to need materials for the um curriculum, the books and whatnot, for the foreign language. So I think, I think, if I'm correct, they vetted many sort, you know, they would have to come with that information, I would say.
Uh, yeah, that is presented. Materials, whatever um curriculum or curricular resource that the committee recommends is only made by that one company, while she looks at three different company, while she looks at three different textbooks that might be sold by three different vendors, the one they select may only be sold by our court Mifflin.
All right, Tommy, your hand is up, go ahead. You're muted.
I'm glad RJ brought this up, because this is a huge problem. And it has to be, you know, better defined and paid attention to, for example. Um, I want to buy a Corvette, well, that's exclusive product to Chevrolet. But there's many Chevrolet dealers across our country. And yes, that's a exclusive product, but there's a multiple ways to buy it. Your textbooks, I don't know much about that business, but there may be textbook distributor in Minnesota. Now, that wants to sell textbook, I don't know. So all that exclusivity stuff in the age of the internet and global logistics, it's kind of nonsense, and I, I really don't believe much of it.
Go ahead, Lisa.
So what are you saying then, guys, that we're kind of, we're going across, we're going back and forth? You, you, Tom, are you, you think that we should be concrete across the board, or you think that we should just be clear, clear and, you know, with our wording, you know, what do you, what do you? I don't know, you guys are, we're all going back and forth.
May, may I speak to your question for a moment, Tom? So.
I didn't have a question.
Okay, well, to speak to your point about curriculum, right? So for example, when we adopt, we do have a process, we look at the different people that are offering this curricular resource, it's a textbook, it's a material, it's a software license. And we adopt those resources and we put that packet where that's, there's that data, how much per kid? How many copies are we buying, so that's available to you for your review, so that you have that information. Um, but once, the question that I have is, you know, once that recommendation is made so that the team, you know, and to my knowledge, there is not a lot of textbook distribution, many of them are aftermarket sales. So oftentimes, we often keep a structure where we try to look at every seven years whether the copyright is still good, if we were to purchase replacement copies, that would be a great idea to go to these aftermarket distributors. But we might not be able to get a new package where there's online licensing. For example, in the age of COVID, those licenses that allow kids to engage um with some material online as well as home, having textbooks that go back and forth um would not be applicable to some of those aftermarket distributors. So I guess my question for this group is, if we adopt a curricular resource um that is then, you know, or, or a resource that's for the district, for example, Power School, um or other uh factors that are um that we have adopted and are part of our regular um cycle, is that something that, in, according to this policy, is requi- is required to go out to bid? If it's renewed on a triennial basis or annual basis or um because there's an impact on instruction, if we switch vendors all the time on things that we have a six-twelve student success plan that really helps kids get, you know, what they need.
Yeah, see, I think, Jen, I think that would kind of be a gray area, and I think that's something that we would definitely have to discuss, because I, I think if we do adopt a specific um learning plan, or like you said, um I'm sorry, what was the um?
There, there's curricular resources, I maintain a list of those that are in.
But a specific curricular resource, if we adopt a specific one, and that's the one that we say, this is the one we're going to specifically use. You know, it, it is kind of hard to bounce from one to none, but with that being said, I do think that the waivers do need to be fine tuned in the wording aspect, but not to the point that we nail ourselves to the wall, whereas
Right.
you can't, you know, that we, that we no longer have any flexibility and that we're not going to be able to get anything done, you know, academically for the kids within, you know, and our district is at a standstill.
I, I think, and I don't know if the language is, but we maintain a list of adopted resources. And those that are, you know, and, and any new resource that's been brought to the board, you've, we've adopted, you've seen paperwork to sort of account for some costs and some vetting and, and, and summary of those things. So moving forward, we continue to do that, and then anything that sort of has been approved would be waived for this process, so that I don't have to every year decide if I'm going to have, like, I can just process the renewal until such time as we decide to revisit. And I do, we try to do that every seven years to make sure there's nothing outdated and copyrights and things like that.
I agree with you, Jen, I think the wording for this waiver should be very specific to what you're saying. And not encompass like an I T project or some other project with your textbooks. I think, the textbooks and curriculum activity shouldn't probably have its own waiver, and maybe we add something else for everything else.
So maybe RJ, should we look at that and I can kind of, we can wordsmith it, so it's, it allows us to continue with our instructional program without interruption?
Yeah, absolutely, I have, my intent was not to interrupt the curriculum side, but more I want to get, I want some concrete guidance from the board on how we want to proceed with sole source bids. But.
I think there's general consensus as far as, I think, just moving forward, I don't think academically is where we need to.
Right.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think the curriculum base and that, you know, Jen, I think on your aspect, I think that's, you know, a safe place, you know, as far as that, but um, on your, you know, for you, RJ, I think the wording does need um you know, we find, yeah, tightened up, absolutely, thank you. Go ahead, Tia, I'm sorry. You're muted. Yes, so I, I, I do get that, and there are sometimes, like, Power School is such a huge part of our whole programming, it, it involves grading, it involves attendance, so many aspects of it. So, you know, I, I can, I know you've got, you guys have come to the board when you want to switch something that's major like that anyway, and if there's a need. But we should put the wording in that there has to be a reason why, if it's a sole source, you know, that a, a true explanation of why, why, you know, why you did go the distance and why it has to be a one-source deal. But you, you can, you can go out there, but you, you can just imagine all the things that would come in. But I believe that you probably do that, many textbook companies and, and programs come from all over the place. But I believe most curriculum workshops, if you will, or when, you know, when you're going to order something, they do vet a lot of that sourcing, but I do think the material, the vetting process should be included in the package before, or, or as I've said many times, you kind of sometimes need, I know it's hard because you do it during the day, but some kind of a process where it goes to a subcommittee and gets explained and then comes back to the board too.
And that's.
We could fit that in somewhere, I don't know.
That's a, that's helpful with the Curriculum Advisory Council, and we can bring the master list of district textbooks and core resources to the board for your review so that anything on that list, um that's previously adopted.
You did that with us, though, I know you did, because I, I definitely, my years kind of, you know, perk up when you talk curriculum, because i- it's a process and a half, and you just, you know, you have your set needs for our set students in East Haven too, so that all has to be looked at too, so.
And, and there's a lot of impropriety, like you, you know, even whether the person selling the textbooks, sending donuts and flowers, you know, you want to make sure that the purchase is not influenced by anything, it's really.
All that frivolity, I can't say it right.
I mean, you go to a conference and everybody's trying, you know, so.
They're all handing you their pens and there's this and there's that, and somebody gives out one iPad and you run to that department, you know, yeah, it doesn't. It can cloud your view.
Absolutely. Anything else on the um waiver um aspect of that policy? Anything else at all? All right, well, I think that was great, RJ, thank you so much for bringing those points to um the expenditures and purchase procedures. I believe that is all for the um policy revisions. Um, I, can I get a motion to adjourn, or do I need a motion to adjourn for the subcommittee? You're muted again.
You do, you can just send it.
Okay, so then I will, a motion to adjourn at uh six-twenty-six and then um see everyone back at six forty-five for the finance subcommittee.
All right, we'll bring this uh finance subcommittee to order at six forty-five. Start out with the review of purchase orders and review of invoices, does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
I was just uh curious with the the blanket payment for L P N services district wide, there's two of them. One for pro care therapy, one for Solian Health, they're both exactly the same, is that legit?
We contracted with two different companies to have the same services.
Okay. And just one other quick thing, the backdrop, the backstops and stuff like that, that was put out to bid. And I'm just, you know, thinking about the last time for the $52,000.
Correct, yeah, so the backdrops went out to bid. They were approved at our last meeting a couple of weeks ago. We have been in contact with the Fencum company. They are beginning work in the upcoming weeks. There's a little delay based on a material backlog based on COVID. So once we get that in place, we're pushing them to be done by April break.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom, it's Jack. I was there for the walkthrough. There were at least eight different companies who did the walkthrough and did all the measurements. And when the bids came in, the company that was most respected and had the, well, I don't, I don't believe it was the lowest bid, but it was right there. And they're a very reputable company, so. It all went through and there shouldn't be any questions about it.
All right, thank you.
All right, anyone else with any questions?
There was one more question I had and I thought I had printed it out, but I didn't. And this is just for the life insurance for Mr. Serio. There was two different ones and I, I'm just going from memory. One was from, for like $11,000 and there was another one for the normal $600 and something dollars per month. I was just curious as to why both of those were there. I'm trying to find it right now.
Mr. Serio, when he left, had a contractual thing that where he, we pay his life insurance for his life.
No, I, I do understand that. And I thought that was the one that was the monthly one, but then there was another one for like $11,000.
He actually has a few policies because of his large life insurance policy. We tried to bid it out so that we get better pricing for different. So we have actually three policies for him, three different companies to save money.
Okey doke.
All right, anyone else? All right, we'll move on to the budget projection.
Lynn?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute. The, as you can see from our budget projection, we have encumbered everything that we believe we should need through the end of the year, except for the services that go down on a monthly basis. The reason it's negative is because we had not yet received the excess cost reimbursement that we did receive yesterday. So this is now gotten to a balance of 700 as of today, it's 700, sorry. $730,317.32 going forward through the end of the year with the excess cost reimbursement.
And just for clarification, excess cost is a special ed reimbursement grant for specialized services related to those supported through student IEPs.
The reason the other purchase services is, is so negative is because it's netted down from the excess cost nets down on those expenditure lines.
All right, any questions on the budget? All right. What else do you guys have? Healthy food certification?
It's just the annual certification where the board makes the decision whether or not they would like to continue with healthy foods for the next fiscal year. I've recommended that we bring it to a vote tonight. And I would ask that you please consider continuing with the healthy food certification for all our students in East Haven.
Any questions on that? All right, the last item, All American contract update.
Can I, I'm sorry, Tom, can I just go back to the healthy food certification? Because I wanted to bring to the board's attention the memo that Lynn wrote and some of the language in that memo that will be required if the board is so inclined to approve it because we have to submit the minutes to the State Board of Education in order to verify that we have in fact, and will remain healthy food certified.
All right. All right. All American contract.
So All American, we have, we had signed a five-year contract with them. Sorry, with the 18, 19 year taking us through to the 22, 23 contract year. We agreed upon a pricing for the first three years and we had to negotiate the last two years. So trying to get a jumpstart on our end of year stuff, I reached out to Lance and he had asked for a 2% increase in each of those last two years. And that maintains our cleaning of our school buildings, which is one contract. And the other contract is for our building management, snow plowing up at the high school. That increase for both contracts for our next school year equates to $15,718. And another, for the last year, it's an additional $16,032. And again, that's a 2% increase in '21, '22 and an additional 2% in '22 and '23. So this, this is just brought up here tonight for discussion. We can discuss further if you'd like. And then at the next board meeting, I would like to add it to the agenda to get approved.
When you bring it to the next agenda, can you give us the contract?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I want to look at it. Other than that, the only thing I could say is everyone I talked to about them, they love those guys. They think they do a great job. That's really all I know.
I'll have to concur, Tom.
There was, there was, I thought I saw a piece of correspondence in which somebody was questioning that contract. Does anybody want to talk about that? Or somebody was questioning why Lance is, you know, seems to get all these deals? And Tommy, they brought up the, which, which you took care of, which we eliminated was the, the Home Depot or the Lowe's card that he had. You know, that was brought into this letter. So I don't, I don't know if anyone, if we're going to discuss that at all or.
I didn't see that.
Did you just receive that letter or did everyone?
It was in, it was in our packet.
I never saw it.
It's uploaded. Packet, but when I, when I was on, you know, when I was going through things today, there was a, a letter. Trying to think who it was from.
I can.
It's listed under public correspondence.
Yes.
It was received today. So if you received a physical packet, it won't be in your physical.
Right, it was public correspondence, thank you.
So it's online list, I mean, on your, on the.
Yes, it's on the board drive, unfortunately. Well, not unfortunately, but it was received after physical packets went.
I didn't get that. So it's, so it's something.
Can you email to me, please?
Pardon?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the board drive, so I'll just send it over to you.
Thank you, I apologize.
This morning.
My connection went out, my apologies. So we've already entered into this contract, I mean.
Right.
And in, in my experience in, in working with Lance and those that are employed by him, they are really responsive and do a great job. I hear a lot of positive input and feedback from, from our principals. And when there are issues or something is not working, they're very responsive and correct, have corrected it. And so, you know, even, even the add-on this year of the sanitation attendance, I've received really good input. And in some instances, if things weren't going as planned or working out, a change was made to rectify the situation. So.
Erica, I think, I think the only, the only reason I brought it up, not so much is, is to question Lance's abilities or anything like that. And I always hear great things too. It's, I'm, I'm just wondering, how does that get answered? Does, does someone in your office or who answers that correspondence? Or does it get answered?
No, the correspondence, doesn't it go, it goes to Erica, right, Erica?
Correspondence gets uploaded and is shared with the, the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed. If there's, if there's questions or people are seeking information, we can absolutely respond to that.
Erica or Tom, can I add something? May I?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Um, they do a fantastic job, I have to say. Every school, they, they, if there's an issue, if you're at a meeting, they, they hop right, you know, he's there. I, I asked him once, do you live here seriously? Because he's always there. And I know we weren't there much of the year, but when we were there, everything, you know, when we have, before we, when we were doing even negotiate, anything that we did, that school is immaculate. That I never see anything out of place. But the, as far as going through the, the contract, didn't, is Erica, we, we tried to put things so we don't have to go, you know, things every year and, and it, something's going well. Don't you want to keep it going well, I thought?
Yeah, I believe that there was a five-year contract. Three of the years were negotiated in terms of cost. I think the last two years were not negotiated in terms of cost. And that's why RJ just reviewed the final two years of the, the contract and the potential negotiated costs for the board to approve.
Yes, again, I, I'm, I'm not questioning them. I just want everybody to understand. My thing is that, you know, and, and I would definitely vote to approve that 2%. But I, I'm just looking for somebody to back us up. If this guy's questioning, basically, he's inferring that the board's not doing their job. So I'm just looking to make sure that we have backing to this letter that states, you know, what, basically what Tia just said, you know, that he's.
We are doing our job though. I think we just, we clarified it. Right?
Yeah.
Not only are they exceptional, literally down to the minute, if I get a phone call, being the chair, literally, I make a phone call and things get rectified in the ridiculous, timely manner, it's unheard of. Putting that aside and everyone agreed on that, so thank you for that. And my, I agree with what you're saying, Jack, to a point, but the problem with what, what you're saying is it would go by, what about every other correspondence that, that attacks us every day? You know what I'm saying about the superintendent not doing their role and they're getting XYZ handles to them or not, nothing, Eric, I'm just making a point. But like other, other admins throughout the district or whatever. I think that, I'm not saying we can't address it, but I just think that, again, things are not consistent across the board. So I don't think we should find one thing to pull apart, that's all. And it's nothing that you said, Jack, other than just.
Exactly, Lisa, I'm just saying that we need to, in the record, that we are all for this and the reasons that we are for this, when it comes to the vote, you know, to make sure that people understand that, you know, yes, we've looked at this, we understand it. You know, we've gone through it, it's been discussed. And this is, you know, our approval, whatever.
Is Michelle here? Is Michelle here?
Erica's hand, Erica's hand is raised. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, that's okay. No, Tom, I just wanted to say, you know, kind of to echo what everyone else has said as well. Not only have All American done fantastic throughout the district, this community as well. I don't know if many people know, but All American has helped out throughout for sporting events. Throughout, not only that, but their children as well, I mean, throughout our community. The Horton family has helped out substantially within our community as a whole. So I mean, this community is very grateful for that family as well as that business. So I just want to thank the Hortons for their business within East Haven, so.
Absolutely. I thought Michelle was here, so I don't know, can, because usually if there's a question to be asked, we direct it, right? It gets directed to whomever it's supposed to be go to. But really, if there's something that is specifically asked in the question, you know, in that correspondence, then Michelle perhaps being the chair would answer, correct? I don't know, but, but people are assuming that we can stop meetings and answer every, you know, they can pose situations and we want, we welcome that. But am I wrong, anybody? I mean, I, I want to answer questions.
Just to point out what you just said, Michelle has, Michelle, I think you're still there, right? You there or so? Okay, well, Michelle, Tia has, like, if there was a question or concern about, I mean, All American, if she had any concerns or, or just a question, she'd reach out to me. So I think that, and then I would obviously in turn, you know, reach out to them. I think that everyone's very clear, they communicate.
Like you're out, you went out, Lisa.
I would, sorry, Lisa, I know you went out, but I'd also like to say that everyone is discussing a public correspondence from someone who never looked at your name or address.
So we should, yeah, okay.
Would you say, Eric, I couldn't hear you, what? Sorry, you had broken up, but I just want to, I just wanted to be known that the comment that's being discussed for public correspondence is from someone who has not listed their, their full name or address for public correspondence. So it's virtually, it's virtually an anonymous, so.
Got you, got you, got you, got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, I think it's fair to move on.
Okay, we're all set, I got a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
We're good.
Then after this time, I'll call to order this evening's meeting, March 9th. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Melissa, if you could pull up the flag? Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so at this time, before we go further, Melissa, I'll ask for you to do a roll call, attendance.
Yes. Tia De Palma, here. Jennifer Delongo, here. Lisa Geraci and Estacia, here. Tom Hennessy.
Here.
Tom Murtaugh.
Here.
Marian Pellegrino, here. Erica Santiago, here. Jack Stacy.
Here.
And Michelle DeLuce, here.
Oh, the call members are in attendance this evening?
Yes.
Right, okay, great. So I don't have much for a chair report. I just do want to remind everyone, it is March and it's Board Appreciation Month. So being that everyone is with us this evening, I just want to express my thanks to all of you for giving your, your time and making such a commitment to the East Haven community and Board of Education. So that's, that's all I have this evening. And I will move on to see if there's any subcommittee reports.
Athletics. I'll just, I'll just report quickly that the winter sports are winding down. Preparations for end of the season festivities are underway, they're working on them. Spring sports are gearing up and that, I'm sure Mr. Verderam will fill you in on all of this when he comes on. That's it.
Thank you, Jack. Tia? I'm sorry, personnel.
Personnel, yes. Sadly, there is something on the, on the rehire and there's another retirement, but I'll let Ms. Ms. Forty discuss that. We also are discussing, we're in negotiations, we're moving along with the custodians and the Paris.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, Lisa, did you have an update?
Yeah, just a quick update. Still waiting on the equipment for the high school for the auditorium and all the speaker equipment regarding a mogwinn today, there had been a leak sprinkler system, it was fixed today.
Did we lose Lisa? Lee, are you there? Okay, maybe we'll circle back if she has anything else. Erica, policy, I believe we were all pretty up to date. Is there any series that, if you want to just update us, the series that will begin? Is there any series that, if you want to just update us, the series that will begin next?
Uh, 6,000 series, um, we started, so that'll be on, um, that's what's getting worked.
Okay. Alright. Yes.
Sorry, I didn't even know. Apologize, sorry about that. Um, just a little, the, um, quick update, the, um, high school, um, auditor, the speaker systems, I'm still on order. I mean, still, you know, waiting for the arrival. Today, the, um, leak at, at the, um, middle school, the sprinkler system had been fixed, that was done today. There is a, um, for the food service program, the RFP, uh, route for the replacement equipment. I don't have anything additional, um, regarding that, but I also wanted to share with you guys that they did break ground at Ferrara. And the, uh, they're on way with the, um, playscape and it looks wonderful. I, um, have some pictures I can upload to Melissa and she could share with you guys.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so a- at this time, I'm gonna pass it on to the superintendent. You're on mute, Erica.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, thanks, Michelle. Um, first, March is Board of Education Appreciate- Appreciation Month and, um, on behalf of myself, our students, our families, our faculty and staff, I'd like to thank the Haven Board of Education for your dedication and advocacy for public education. We know the amount of time and effort, um, that you put into the, the board's actions and the hard work that you employ on behalf of our students every day. So we are grateful and for that. Uh, we'd like to thank you. Happy Board of Education Appreciation Month. Um, I also want to let the community know that on March 6th, on Saturday, we did, uh, 260 first dose vaccines for all of our faculty and staff through a closed clinic, clinic that was held at Branford High School. Um, today, we did an additional 48 staff members at a closed clinic that was held in, uh, North Branford. Um, and we will reassess and once East Shore Health, um, uh, learns how many vaccines that they have for next week, we will then look to schedule, um, a clinic and continue, um, moving forward until all of our faculty and staff who would like to receive the vaccine are vaccinated. I, we do have some food service updates and reminders, so just a reminder that every day, um, our remote learners can access our school lunch program at the high school and the middle school. Um, and currently we are distributing food at Mamawin. And we have just started distributing food on Fridays, um, not only to, um, remote learners driving through our sites, but also for all students who are in-person learners are leaving school on Fridays with food for Saturday and Sunday. Um, and, um, I was able to get some information in detail relative to, um, our efforts thus far. And, uh, 15 new families have reached out for weekly meal pickups. Um, this, this is not a new practice. We already had 12 who had made arrangements previously to the message going out. Um, we've met the needs of seven families who require additional assistance in, in obtaining meals as well. Um, and I'd like to just thank Linda, uh, the food service team and Julie for help coordinating those efforts to ensure that, uh, we're reaching as many families as possible. We are hosting some, uh, public school family forums. So, um, we had one on Tuesday, March 2nd, um, it was called Parenting in the Pandemic. And on April 6th, we have our next, um, family forum called Helping Students Get Stuff Done. So, uh, we are recording those and circulating the presentations, but we're hoping that families can, uh, join us on those dates um, to talk more about, um, these areas of focus, but also other areas that we could focus on and provide, uh, supports. Let's see, on Tuesday, March 16th at 4:00 PM at the high school, the mobile food pantry will be here. So, um, anybody who would like to drive up and fill up and go, that's at 4 o'clock on March 16th at the high school. Um, and I'm going to turn it over to, um, Mr. Verderam so he can, uh, give us a little bit more of a sports update and then I'll con- conclude with some additional statements. Anthony?
Thank you. Um, Board, congratulations. Happy Board of Education Month. Uh, have to be honest, it's an absolute pleasure working with you. This is the best Board of Education I've ever worked with. Um, the ability to pick up the phone and have a conversation with Mr. Stacy, Geraci, anybody at any time is, it's amazing. Thank you, guys. Uh, you really are all committed to our children and what we do and your support is greatly appreciated. Thank you, guys. Um, now for winter sports, we currently have two teams in quarantine. We're working through that and they will be back for the playoffs. Thank God. Um, boys' basketball will have senior night on Friday night along with the cheerleading team. And once all of our playoffs are done, spring sports are ready to go. We have our middle school sports packets. We're sent out to all the families and we're all emailed. And we're looking to have a full competitive season in middle school sports. Additionally, high school sports, all the coaches are in the process of getting all the kids signed up. Uh, the equipment is getting put together. Mr. Longley, um, and also Mr. Coyle from Public Works, I've been in constant communication with them. And they're working very hard with the entire Public Works Department to get our fields ready for our kids to play this spring. Other than that, things are going very well and our athletes are extremely happy to be on the field, to be playing. And even those who are quarantined, they're thankful for what they had and looking forward to competing in the playoffs.
Anthony, I'd just like to thank you. I, um, I know that families in, and, um, across the whole district are so happy about the high school sports being, you know, on, on the way, but the middle school parents have called endlessly. So grateful. Thank you. And the, just the overall spirit and the mental health, I can guarantee will, will just be, I'm just, I'm looking forward to it. I, these families are gonna be excited. These childrens are gonna, their spirits are gonna rise and they're good. They're, we'll, we'll see less is what I'm saying. We'll see less. I'm looking forward to it. Thanks, Ant.
Thank you. And our, our young athletes are having a very difficult time in this pandemic, uh, finding places and avenues to safely compete. And again, we can do it better. We can do it safer than almost anybody else out there. Uh, when middle school sports does kick off in the spring, we're gonna have the same parameters. We're gonna have two off-season coaches who will be compliance officers, will be going, taking temperatures intake every day, going around to the practices, checking for compliance and best practices. And I have every confidence in our staff and in our kids and in our parents that we're gonna have a very successful spring season. And this is all thank you to the board's support, Mrs. Forty's support and a wonderful working relationship with East Shore Health Department. Uh, Mrs. Dulucia, myself, Mr. Palmer, um, we're on the meeting today with, uh, Ms. Forty. And i- it's a working relationship. We are by no means as a town out of this pandemic, but we're doing everything we can to be safe and navigate through it until we are.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony, and we'll keep our fingers crossed for a, a limited spring rainy season for you, for all your outdoor spring sports.
Thank you, guys.
And so I'm just gonna conclude with, um, I know the board's aware and our community is aware that Mamawin School has transitioned into, um, a temporary remote learning environment. Um, you know, we are monitoring the cases. We are, we are concerned and, um, trying to help and support East Shore Health as they do more investigative contact tracing, um, and provide us with more information. Um, we, we understand at this time that, you know, everybody wants to get back into their school building. Um, we're just asking everybody to be patient. Um, I spoke with, um, Mike from East Shore Health today. He does have, um, somebody who's solely focused on, um, doing some additional contact tracing, who reached out to, I think they, they've got ahold of nine of the 13 individuals that they wanted to talk to today. And as they collect more information and, um, make some determinations, we're seeking information to them because we're very curious about, um, the cases and if we're experiencing in-school transmission there. So as we wait for more information from East Shore Health, um, as they talk further with staff and families, uh, we just ask you to be, to be patient with us as well.
Erica, did you have a question?
Um, I just wanted to, um, I just wanted to say, Erica, if there's somebody that you could specifically put on that, maybe even help with, um, principal, um, you know, how, um, Ms. McKinnon or help with the health department or someone, just to get additional, um, resources at Mamawin, maybe to help with contact tracing. Just because the number that did uptick with the cases, I don't know if it was just more testing, more parents that were, um, getting their children tested. I mean, Jen, as a PA, maybe you could kind of jump in with there too. Um, I can't, I can't say as a board member that I feel comfortable saying that there was no in-school spread.
Um, I, yeah, I get that, yeah.
Oh, I, I would feel more comfortable knowing that you do have more hands with contact tracing because I would feel better saying, yes, you know what, we know that there was in-school spread in this and then, and that, and just calling it a day, you know what I mean? And knowing where our errors fell and then, and learning from that, but then saying, you know, because we know it was bound to happen and we were safe for as far, for as far and as long as we could have been. But I'd rather get as many people in that school as possible, contact tracing and see where our error fell and see what happened and how we can do it so that it doesn't happen anymore.
Erica, I have actually, I spoke, I spoke with Mike from East Shore about this several times, about how, how, you know, we could really determine that there is no contact tra- you know, no, um, in-school transmission. And I believe his answer was due to the rate in the community, it's difficult to determine if the transmission is from the school. So it's not as if, you know, it's a definite no, but you can't really, there hasn't been any way yet to determine that it was a definite.
There's no definitive. I mean, I, I, I get it. I get it. I work in, I mean, I work in Smilo. I get it. I mean, I know, know, the teachers aren't going up and sneezing in the kids' faces and vice versa. I get it with the masks and the spacing and, and vice versa. But there's common knowledge and there's things and I would listen to our teachers and, and they're inside those classrooms. And I think having very difficult conversations, I think we need to just have very serious, difficult conversations. And I think it's just something that we need to do because to see the numbers that we just saw, having to go virtual, I think we need to be careful. And it's just us, a very serious conversation that I think we need to have before we get any bigger numbers.
And so Erica, I appreciate, I totally appreciate your, your sentiment. And I know that Mike has also reached out to the State Department of Education to ask for assist- assistance as well. You know, we do the contact tracing at a very, you know, school-based preliminary level and then East Shore Health follows up with another level. I think as they are digging deeper into some of the cases and collecting information, they're also eliciting state, um, assistance from the State Department of Public Health. And, you know, I do realize it's taking a while, but I think they want to do a thorough job and get as much information as possible. Um, I'm, I'm just as impatient as everybody else and I, I want the information in detail as well. Um, I'll talk with Bob. We might be able to offer additional LPN assistance there for additional just day-to-day basic, um, contact tracing. Um, and unless, you know, anybody else from the health-related field has any other, uh, information or insight.
Erica, just to ask, the tracker, is that only report cases that have been actually reported to us? Or do we take from East Shore?
So the, the tracker is any confirmed case that we're notified of. So sometimes, um, you know, a parent will call or a staff member will call and, and let us know. And upon receiving a copy of the test results, you know, it's confirmed and it gets reported. Sometimes we're not made aware and so what happens is, is, um, after the test results come back, those test results are uploaded into a database system that East Shore Health can see. And when they, when cases aren't reported to us, East Shore Health is reporting the case to us. So there is a little bit of a delay in that. A lot of times we find out about the positive case before East Shore Health does. If we don't, East Shore Health generally picks up the case several days later and notifies us. Um, and then they start the, the contact tracing process.
And that's automatic though, that East Shore is notified if it's anyone from our town?
Yes, yep, that's automatic.
Okay. Yep. Just wanted to check, uh, let's see, Jen? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, my question is just what's the plan for Mamawin to go back to school?
So as you know, we, they're on remote through the remainder of this week. Um, we were working with East Shore Health in, uh, monitoring the positive cases that either pop up in their system or that are reported to us. Um, and having conversations tomorrow and Friday to make a determination whether we're prepared to return next week or if we want a, a pause for an additional week. Uh, we didn't have any reported cases today, but as you saw throughout the week, there were multiple reported cases. So, um, you know, I think if we don't experience, um, any cases tomorrow or Friday, we might get clearance from them to return on Monday, but every day we're just observing and watching that. In the interim, we did do some deeper cleaning and, you know, we, um, were working with our, our maintenance and custodial staff to ensure that the building is functioning at a, at a efficient level as well for their return. But that's a, that's a great question, Jen. I can't definitively answer it until I receive clearance from the, the East Shore Health Department. Okay. Just letting you know that, uh, Jack called.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Jack. I see him, yeah, Jack.
Yeah, I want to change subject matter a little bit and I hope this is the, um, appropriate time. Um, Erica, I've been getting some messages from former students regarding their college acceptances. And I'm just wondering what you're seeing at East Haven and has there been any adverse effect due to COVID as far as college admissions are concerned? How's it going?
So I don't have the information off the top of my head, Jack, but I can certainly follow up with the high school and the guidance department to see if there's, um, any sort of unintended consequences relative to college admissions due to COVID, if you'd like. And I can have, um, I can follow up with an email and/or include any, in my next newsletter update or have Mr. D'Nuzzo at the next, uh, board meeting as well.
That would be great.
Yeah, I'd just like to see what's, what's going on and, uh, make sure our kids are getting what, what they're due. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Jack. I think Lisa has a question? Got it, alright, I'm starting to mute myself. Okay, Erica, you had said, um, earlier that that there might be a delay in the time. I think that some of the concerns from the parents are that, um, you had mentioned that the, um, response for the tracker was updated and reflect every 14 days and that's. I think we lost, did we lose sound again or is it just me?
No, I can't hear.
Erica Forty?
Are you back?
Yeah, you, it was like gone the whole time?
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah.
Hi, um, anyway, what I was saying, Erica, um, is that the, it was said in the, I'm not sure the exact timeframe that the tracker was updated to reflect a 14-day average, but that's not the case. And some of our community members are, you know, questioning it. So I guess you had said that the response times aren't always the same, I mean, on, on target on that end regarding like them reporting back, but I don't know, me, I think we do need some clarity to give to our families that are, in our, well, the parents that are, you know, concerned and ask questions regularly, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, Erica, did you have a question or are we?
I, I asked Erica to answer, to answer that. Did you not hear that?
No, 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 I, I see, um, the other Erica's hand was up.
I'm sorry, I, I think I might have been frozen or I couldn't hear the question. Am I frozen?
No, you're, you're, I think she asked if the percentage of, uh, on the COVID tracker is a 14-day average or if it's daily. I believe, I, I think that's what.
So, so on, on the tracker, we report from the previous week and then the running present week, so that on Sunday you will see an accurate two-week period with a percentage of in-person learners testing positive. Um, the second week is running because it's not over. Uh, and we decided to do it like that so that it's on Sunday, you can actually see what the most current two weeks positivity rate is on the tracker. Um, the state reports the two weeks prior. So it's not reflective of, um, the current time period that you're in.
Okay, alright. Did anyone have any other questions? No, alright, then at this time, we're gonna move on to the Assistant Superintendent, unless Erica, if you had anything else that you wanted to share with the board?
Nope, I'm, I'm done. I'm, Erica, did you have another question? Nope, I'm, I'm done. I'm, Erica, did you have another question?
No, I just wanted to kind of, um, piggyback off what Jenny was talking about with the, um, because of the delay with the, um, the COVID results and how it, you know, coincides with when the state gets the feedback and then how we get the, um, the results, how it's kind of like that 48-hour window. Maybe not for us not waiting until maybe Friday for making that decision as far as maybe the weekend to extend that week for Mamawgwin. Just because, you know, giving it to maybe Sunday to make that decision as far as making it the full week, an additional week of virtual.
You, I'm sorry. So you're saying make the decision on Sunday as opposed to Friday?
Friday, yeah, just because, I mean, that's along another 48 hours of possible testing. Because if it's Friday when they're testing, that's a whole nother day of school. For, you know.
Yeah.
You, you.
Trying to give parents a little bit of, of a cushion too, to sort of organize childcare if, if necessary. Um, but that's a good thought. I can certainly bring that up, um, in my meeting with East Shore.
Because there is such a lag time in when the testing does go through. And you think, you know, the kids come home from school, that's when the testing goes, this is, you know, and this is, you know, I'm just thinking like as a parent, this is when, you know, most of the testing, and I'd rather not send them back to school and say, oh, this is when it's gonna happen. So, I mean, Jenny has her hand up and I'm just gonna go with her because she tests hundreds of people a day. So, she does.
Jen?
Okay, so I just want to say that I, it's not only the, the 48 hours to get the results, but just the incubation period of when you're exposed to the virus until when you can actually show symptoms. So that's the other concern is if you have siblings and then one has it and the other one doesn't, or if they've been not quarantining with neighbors and if they have to have childcare because parents are working, what, I mean, we tell them to quarantine, but not everybody quarantines, I will tell you. So that's the only thing. It's just you may be better off keeping them out one more week. I know it's hard with childcare and parents, but cleaning the school isn't what's gonna spread it if they go back. It's the kids that we don't know have it and they're still in the incubation period of when they were last exposed. That's the only thing.
Thank you for that information.
All right. So at, at this time, we will move on to Assistant Superintendent Murry.
Thank you. Um, so happy Board Appreciation Month, everybody. I want to thank the board for all of your excellent questions, your service and support in continuing the focus on instructional excellence in East Haven. Um, I'd also like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mrs. Mary Ann Johnson, who has announced her retirement. We wish her the best as she plans for new endeavors. Mrs. Johnson was instrumental in creating integrated instructional experiences and embedded arts enrichment for students as founding principal of the East Haven Academy. While she will be missed greatly, she will leave a lasting legacy. At this time, I want to invite parents of students in grades K through five who are interested in, um, participating in a focus group to give feedback on how we report teaching and learning in report cards. Please register for one of the following focus groups, which will be held on March 24th from four to five PM or on March 29th from seven to eight PM. Links to be registered will be, um, attached to the minutes, um, and I can also share them with you if you contact our office. Um, this will give parents an opportunity to share their thoughts about improving our district report card for the 2020-21 school year and inform the work of the academic committee who will be working on making those revisions. Um, our, the, our focus groups are designed to have open conversations that elicit feedback that will be considered by the committee. Our next curriculum advisory council meeting will be held on April 27th at four PM. Proposed items on the agenda will include assessment calendar updates, district communication plan, pathways initiative at East Haven High School and an atlas overview. Um, I'd also like to propose an upcoming curriculum workshop where I can provide an overview of the mid-year, um, data cycle and give us a pulse on how we are doing in, relative to student achievement at this time. Um, so I look forward to whether that's a workshop that's, um, prior to the committee meetings on the 23rd. Um, I would welcome the opportunity to showcase the learning that's been happening. Um, we are excited to announce that lots of our departments are revising and reviewing their curriculum and assessments. Um, the EHHS science staff is working to align their academic expectation assessments um, with the NGSS standards. And visual arts curriculum in grades K through eight has been updated as that team of visual arts and music works on updating both instrumental and general music curriculum. We thank the team leaders for their support, um, including the Career and Technical Education Team. Their program is announcing some courses being added or reinstated in the next year, including Cafe Maestro, A Working Bistro, Health Science II, News and Broadcast Journalism, Media Courses. Our Career and Technical Education Department is working on a very clear pathway documents that show, uh, show each cluster with a recommended coursework plan for a ninth or 10th grader to look at some of the courses that they can take to make that East Haven High School diploma worth a lot more with the ability to earn certain credentials um, and effectively plan their high school coursework. I'd also like to offer congratulations to four students who completed and the, who competed rather in the Virtual Spring Conference for Health Occupation Student Association, HOSA. Um, those students finished their comp, their competitions for the Virtual Spring Conference and are looking forward to the winners being announced in March. And that concludes my Assistant Superintendent's report, although I will happily take questions or, um, if anyone wants to suggest items that you'd like me to report on in future meetings, I will be happy to do so.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, at this time, we'll move on to approval of meeting minutes from the regular meeting on February 23rd, 2021. Do I have a motion? Erica?
Sorry, I'm trying to fix the settings.
That's okay.
Okay, everyone should be all set.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Very.
Uh, Mary Ann, I will second it. No. Okay. All right. Melissa, if you could do a roll call vote to, for approval of meeting minutes from regular meeting on February 23rd, 2021.
Yeah. Hey, Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Estacio? Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Estacio?
Abstaining.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
Okay, eight, four, one abstention.
Motion carries. All right. So now we come to the approval of the consent agenda. I have approval of invoices for fiscal year 2020, 2021 in the amount of $1,365,157.70 and approval of purchase orders over 7,000. Did anybody have any clarifying questions before a motion? If not, I will ask for a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion, Jack, it's Jack. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as recorded.
Erica Santiago, I second that.
All right. So at this time, I'm gonna ask if anyone has any questions or comments? Okay, if not, Melissa, roll call vote for the consent agenda, please.
Hey, Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
I'm gonna abstain because I haven't reviewed it.
Lisa Geraci and Estacio?
Um, abstaining, same thing. Thank you.
Okay. Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes, and a note, I've lost visual.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
Okay, seven in favor, two abstentions, motion carries.
All right. So that brings us to the audience of citizens portion of this evening. If, is there anyone here that would like to speak tonight?
Okay, if you would like to speak, please use the raise your hand option and I will give you permission to speak. Uh, Lorena? There you go. Lorena, you've been given permission.
Hi, um, before my three-minute mark starts, I just want to make sure that you know that I did submit Board of Education correspondence for the February 23rd meeting before five o'clock, but it wasn't included in the minutes and it wasn't reflected at all.
All right, I'm just gonna ask, was it titled as correspondence? They might not have known.
It was sent to Melissa, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, um, you can start the clock. I just want to make sure that you know that my children do go to Mamawgwin School and I am concerned about the use of the COVID tracker. I believe that it's not an adequate tool that can give parents the information that they're looking for. Over the last two weeks, the error, there have been errors in the tracker in terms of the date. Um, the incidence rate, which is that percent at the bottom, doesn't help parents determine what's happening in the school. What will help parents is assurance and making sure that those clean procedures are done and also that the filtration, that those filters for ventilation are being checked. As you know, winter, the windows are closed, so we want to make sure that those filters are being changed. So show us the logs. I also want to make sure that our, our agendas for Board of Education reflect the things that parents are concerned about. Um, offline and other town meetings, we've already talked about performance tools being an issue with school administrators. It needs to be on this agenda. Number two, we need to know the school district data in terms of learning gaps before and after the pandemic. Number three, we need to know the S R two summer plans. And number four, we need to know what our students and teachers think in those surveys that were done in Thanksgiving. So I want to make sure that we include things that the parents are really concerned about. Um, over the last two weeks, I have been sending a lot of emails, especially to Mike Pasquilla and Erica and even our mayor, because I'm really concerned about how the viral incidences, it is in school transmission. And the reason is because our public health department at the state level doesn't collect the data, uh, the school metrics as other states do. I feel like it states like New Jersey, they use different ways of collecting information. And so what we've done is we've limited the data so much that that incidence rate at the bottom is not working for us. And you can even test that out because we do have staff, for example, at the middle school over the last three weeks that were positive, but didn't even report it. They came into school while they were positive, but because they live in a different town, you won't capture it and neither will Mike. So that's a real issue that you all should be dialoguing to make sure that parents do have that two-way communication that we, we are requesting. Thank you very much and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would, uh, like to speak this evening? Okay, so if not, at this time, I'm, I'm sorry, is there another hand up?
No, I said, sorry, I don't see anyone.
Okay, all right. So then at, at this time, I will have us move on to new business. We have, um, item 7.1, discussion and possible action on approval of hires, rehires and stipends. And, and I will say is, um, I'm happy for Mrs. Johnson, but I'm also sad she's principal at the school for my, my children and it's gonna be a, a, a big space to fill.
We're, we're grateful for her service and her dedication over the many years that she's been working, um, and living and contributing to this community. Um, it is really bittersweet where I am really happy for her as well, but she surely will be missed.
Okay, so at this time is, do I have a motion?
We had De Palma, I motion, um, uh, I'm sorry, to, um, take action on the approval of hires, rehires and stipends. And I also will miss Mrs. Johnson. All three of my children had her. She's, she's great.
Jen, I'll second. Sorry, Jack.
Okay, go ahead. You're good.
Seconded by Miss Delongo, um, any, if there's no clarifying questions, we're gonna ask Melissa to go ahead for a roll call vote. Melissa?
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Estacio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes, and thank you to Mary Ann and Johnson for her service.
Jack Stacy?
Yes, with reservations regarding Miss Johnson's retirement.
Miss Delucia?
Yes.
Michelle Delucia, sorry.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. That brings us to discussion and possible action on the approval of the 2021-2022 Healthy Food Certification. Um, I, I'm gonna read the motion a, as should be read. Uh, motion to approve the 2021-2022 Healthy Food Certification pursuant to, um, CGS Section 10-215F. The Board of Education or Governing Authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups. Food and beverage exemptions, the Board of Education will allow this way. Am I reading all that, Erica, into the minutes?
The second part of it?
Yeah, beverages. Yes, yes. Okay. The Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statute provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or a school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays and interscholastic debates are events, but school practices, plays, rehearsals and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held. And that is the motion. I, I, I dare someone to go ahead and reread that back. Um, do I, do I have a second?
Second, Tia De Palma. That's it.
All right. So I, at this time, Melissa, uh, well, first I'll ask, is there any clarifying questions or any questions at all, discussion on this? Okay, if not, then, um, Melissa, if you could do a roll call vote?
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Estacio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle Delucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right. So that brings us to, we have discussion and possible, possible action, the revision of the following policies. I believe both were just discussed this evening. None are up for approval. the revision of the following policies. I believe both were just discussed this evening. None are up for approval, are they?
Just the special education one, as that didn't require any change or recommended revisions, if, if you so please. The other two, we will bring revised versions back after the input provided during the subcommittees.
Okay, so it would be just discussion and possible action on the revision of 6159, Individualized Education Program and Special Education Program. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, Erica De Palma. I make a motion to approve the revision of, well, no, because we didn't revise it, it's just the review, correct?
They revised it.
It was revised, yeah. Oh, yes, that one. So that, oh, yes, could be shortened, that one. That, yes, to approve the revision of 61.6159 Individualized Education Program, Special Education Program.
Tia De Palma, I second that.
Right, so at this time, does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I will ask Melissa, if you could do a roll call vote on 7.3, please.
Okay. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Anastasia?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yep.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
So at, at this time, if anyone would like to request future agenda items, feel free to do so. Otherwise, if you want to take some time, please email myself or the superintendent. Our next finance subcommittee is on March 23rd at 6:30, and our regular Board of Education is March 23rd at 7:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Tia De Palma, a motion to adjourn.
Mary Ann Pellegrino, I will second that.
All right, meeting, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining, and I look forward to seeing you on March 23rd. Or actually, possibly I'll be sending out an email to set up that curriculum workshop prior to that. Will you be ready to do that prior to the next meeting, Jen?
I was thinking that would be great if the board is inclined to be able to schedule that.
Okay, I'll, I'll take care of that. Melissa, send a, an invite out for date and time availability. All right, so I, I will see everybody, like I said, soon at the next meeting.